Good evening and welcome to the Millis School Committee meeting of June 19th, 2018, the last day of school. Before we begin, I want to announce that this meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 PM on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. All meeting videos are also posted to the Millis Public School website under School Committee and then all times are approximately. First and foremost, I am the chairperson, Stephen Catalano. Robert Briggs.
Here.
Mark Conroy.
Yeah.
Ms. Gibbons, Denise Gibbons.
Here.
Ms. Roach.
Here.
We have no teacher reps. The superintendent has a question.
Here.
And there are no student reps. Jody, is anyone signed in for open session?
There is no one signed in for open session.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna move around a little bit on the agenda. We're gonna go back to the action items, but we'll have a presentation on the digital learning by Jen Starr, the Director of Digital Learning and Innovative Educational Technology.
Yes.
Thank you.
All set?
All set.
All right. Well, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm very excited to share the work we've been doing around developing this digital learning and innovation plan. In your packets, hopefully you have a memo. It should summarize pretty much the whole process that we had here. You'll also have the plan itself in a timeline, the beginnings of the timeline there. And then you'll have our presentation. So, just to start, we began our journey, I'd say probably in January with a group of teachers, students, family, community members. And this 2018 work group got right to work with three phases in developing a digital learning plan. In the first phase, we collected data, just kind of looking at what we have in district, and we also conducted a number of surveys. During Phase 2, we developed goals, which I'll share with you. And then during Phase 3, we created the plan that you have before you tonight. So, when we set out to create this plan, we really wanted to have something that was being done strategically and we wanted it to be dynamic. And I think I remember mentioning that to you last time we sat down to say we were going to start this process. And I think we've achieved that. During Phase 1, we surveyed students, families, and staff members, collected data around all different topics. We looked at demographics, we looked at access to technology, we looked at how technology was being used, skill levels, and a number of other topics as we built our goals. During the goals development stage, we took all that survey data, we looked at what we're already doing in district with initiatives, things that we know that we have coming up that we have to do, and tried to incorporate all of those pieces, including the needs that we found through the survey data. We also looked to the ST, essential conditions, what does it take for a technology program and technology integration to be effective? So, we refer to those and we'll continue to refer to those. During Phase 3, we took everything that we had and we tried to create a roadmap, we tried to create sort of a trajectory for growing, and really tried to focus on making it be adaptable and able to evolve with the ever-changing landscape of education, of technology, and all that we're doing with blended and personalized learning in the district. So, here we got to the point where the work group had the data, had started developing all the goals, and we said, "What is our vision? What is it we're trying to make happen as a result of this?" And focusing on Millis School's strategic plan and district improvement plans, we want to make sure that Millis has a sustainable digital learning environment that fosters all of these qualities: communication, collaboration, of course blended and personalized learning, student ownership of learning, and operational efficiency, which is a big piece for us. We have a plan. What do we want to see happen as a result of it? And we want to make sure that we're preparing our students to be lifelong learners. We want to make sure that we are providing 24/7 equitable access to technology inside and outside of school. We want to make sure that we're using technology in powerful ways to collect data, to inform instruction, and we also want to make sure that we have in place in our plan a way to sustain a technology budget that will keep our digital learning environment robust. Okay? So, as I mentioned, this is aligned with Millis's strategic plan, and in that vein, everything we do is support student achievement through ensuring a digital learning environment that's engaging and robust and reliable. We want to make sure that professional learning is building capacity for our teachers and our staff. We want to make sure that the policies and procedures we have in place are keeping safe, are promoting effective use of digital tools. And finally, we want to make sure that there's some foresight in there and applied to looking at funding and sustaining the different programs. There are five goal areas. I'm not going to read all these slides to you. They're all in your packets, but just very quickly to kind of go through them, digital content instruction assessment, we came up with four goal areas under that, or subgoals. One is a communication goal, and that is a lot around how do we communicate home and school and how do we use our tools very well for communication. They wanted to, the work group, wanted to create a digital literacy goal that builds competencies in digital literacy, looks at STEM and computer sciences. They also wanted a personalized instruction goal, which seemed very appropriate for Millis. To, we use the word accelerate. I know that there are other ways, other verbs we could have used there, but, and it's a living document, so we can edit. But to accelerate student learning by using the principles of universal design for learning, project-based learning, using our learning management system, and we've started looking at adaptive technologies, maker spaces. I can say now, as of this morning, we had a letter from Merit, and so it says, "Maker Spaces and Innovation Labs." Now, we can say Merit Innovation Lab because they are actually going to be funding two innovation labs in the district starting next year, so that's exciting. More on that later. We'll get you all in the virtual reality room for the meeting. Under professional learning, we have two goals. One is a collaboration goal. That's something that Millis does so well with so many. We have maybe another opportunity to talk about Fuse MA, but this is lighthouse classrooms that are implementing instructional practices around a design team that chose them. It's very, very amazing what's going on with that. Maple Collaborative is something we've been involved in. We're actually a Maple catalyst district. And then the Education Collaborative, Education Cooperative, one of the biggest things we're doing there is looking at the adaptive learning technologies and also student data privacy. And again, that's probably another day, but the amount of work that's gone into developing a contract that is now going to be leveraged through the tech districts so that we can get these contracts signed without us, all of us going out, it's very big. So, if you're interested in that one, ask me. The second professional learning goal is around training and professional learning activities. So, we're trying to design blended and personalized learning activity or environment for our students. We also want to make sure our teachers are getting that opportunity. There are four goals around access and infrastructure. One is around devices, making sure that we have devices to support our learning. The second is around network. There's always something to do with the network. We're always bringing in more devices. For next year, we're thinking about Clyde Brown, and we're thinking about MCAS testing. We're thinking about the lighthouse classrooms that are going to have more devices in them and just in general, the number of devices being used in that. We don't want to invest a lot in an infrastructure there, but we certainly have to make it up to par to get through a year before we're in our new building. So, those kinds of things. Support is another big one. Again, looking back at the mobile devices, two things that came up here, the student help desk. Our students who were involved in the planning process brought up this idea of having a student help desk. They would like to do that here in the school or help forum, so that's something that we'll be working on. And then personnel-wise, we'll be advocating, you know, as much as we can to have our mobile device manager a full-time position. We've more than doubled the number of mobile devices being managed, and we still have a part-time person managing them. And it's a very skilled and very specific skill set managing those devices using specific tools, so that is something that will be part of our planning. And then systems integration is a big one, and we actually are already engaging in that with Power School and its learning, integrating our student information system with our learning management system, which is going to automate many, many things, and working on getting single sign-on setups, so students will be logging with a Google account. And then the last two goal areas are policies and procedures. I think you can read through most of those, and probably the biggest part of that would be automating some of our processes. We are implementing online registration for students. There's certainly the possibility to look toward automating some of our HR tasks through the same vein, so. And then the last area is funding and budget, and that is going to be a community effort. So, we'll be looking to the admin team, the school committee, and others to help really find ways and think about the best ways to sustain the great program that's going on here now. Our next steps, we're gonna be, I'll show you the timeline very briefly, but we'll be working on each action step is really its own project. It's got a project to be managed, it's got people who will be responsible for, seeing that there's certain evidence of progress or completion is there. You can reach that through the digital learning website or through quick links. I have an image up there, the quick links on the district site. Let me take you quickly to that site. I think you'll like this because it really speaks to the nature of it being a living document, not something that you read once and put down and then check back in three years to see how you did, or even one year. So, we have our site set up. The first page of it has the actual plan, which you have in front of you. Any changes we make to that plan will be reflected right here in the site. Under the goal areas are the five goal areas in the goals. So, for instance, under digital content instruction, my hope is that this is where we'll start housing evidence of what we're doing. So, if we say that we had a community learning day, this is where we would have pictures or a quick paragraph or something, and over time, keep building evidence of what we're doing and how we're meeting these goals. And then finally, on the site, is a timeline, and you have that, and you'll notice that there are spaces in that timeline because that's something, we're at the very beginning phase of some of these projects, and then some of them we can pop in and update right away. And again, different people can be involved in the same document, which is nice. It's not just one person building this, but also any changes that we make, any additions we make will all be reflected live. So, it's always going to be a transparent process and hopefully one that will feel more alive and exciting to see the kinds of things that we're doing. I am available for any questions you have. How do I do?
Great. Great.
So, Jen, obviously, well, you've been here a few times, and we've put this question directly to you, but we also do it, anytime an admin person comes in, whether it's athletics or transportation or whatever, we always say, you know, our focus is budget and policy, clearly. What can we do or how can we work together strategically to look at budgeting issues around this, to make sure we're maintaining what we're already doing now and to identify potential ask or request coming down the pipe from a new plan? Or maybe, we won't see a dramatic increase, but just, we want, it would be helpful to get an idea of what it looks like strategically around budgeting over the next couple of years. I know this is for a long time, but just short-term.
I'm definitely going to be meeting with our new business manager to do some projections, but the plan that's in place right now is sustainable for next year without any increases as long as everything is funded as is. And then probably the area for growth would be around making sure that we have the one-to-one that we need during, say, like an online testing time, because we go through weeks where the whole district is disrupted by sharing devices so that everybody can get through their testing. So, that would be one area that would be an expenditure that probably wouldn't have to be over and over extra, but we'd find a way to sustain it once we had it going.
When would that, when would you need them with those devices?
When would we need them?
Yeah, meaning is it, is this strictly around testing? So, is this next winter or?
I would want to see it happen like late fall or into the winter so that the students are used to the devices, so that testing is, they're not being tested on their use of the device as well as the test, because that does happen. The other piece of that would be kind of bumping up the infrastructure a little bit over at Clyde Brown temporarily. And we've started getting some quotes for some access points so that, and some rough wiring, we don't have to worry about, you know, beautiful corners if we're just doing it for a year, but a way to get some wiring and then some key areas, especially the third and fourth grade wing, making sure that they have enough wireless there and that it's dependable for that time.
So, I just have a question about that, and I was wondering if it would make sense to implement your plan in the new school so that we're not paying to have the infrastructure implemented and then demolished?
So, the infrastructure that we would invest in, the wiring would be the only piece that we would get demolished. The two access points that we're looking at would actually come over to the middle high school and would supplement what we have here once it was done.
And the wiring, is it an extravagant cost? Is it minimal cost?
No, and I've asked Don to get some estimates on that, but pretty much, I think he wants to run one main line that right now is too many, it's supposed to be about 400 feet and it's longer than that, so it interrupts how things work.
And part of that is, in the third and fourth wing, is for MCAS testing?
And for the Fuse Lighthouse classrooms as well. They're going to be using a lot of wireless devices in their teaching, using the learning management system, so they'll be on devices all day long. So, it's going to be a greater drain on the wireless.
And we're not really in a position to wait then, in your opinion?
No, no. And I think it's an expenditure, like I said, we can take those access points, bring them over to this building, and they definitely won't go to waste.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Conroy.
When we talked about having, making sure we have enough devices for kids for testing, we had enough position for activities.
Yeah, we sorted the puzzle thing where, okay, now, all of them go to third grade today and then all of them go to fourth grade, but right now, there's one cart in third grade of 19, I believe, one cart in fourth grade, and they share that for the whole grade.
And so, how, when we did the new lease this year, I thought we had looked at the schedule and we had gotten ourselves, so at least what we were asking for or what we had purchased was to get us so that we had enough for next year.
We had enough, I believe that went to, it went from, it was for third and fifth grade, because initially, third and fifth were going to be the two that, and then when we went across the board and did all of the possible grades, everything got split up. So...
So, we are one-to-one, fifth through 12th grades, middle school, high school.
Right.
We have one device for every child, and so that is saturated and at a good level
Yep.
for use, but third and fourth grades still need. Did you, were you able to estimate it? I know...
Yes, it looks like it'll be between 120 to 140 to cover third and fourth grade.
Homeschool is funding one additional mobile lab for third grade, is it? Or fourth or shared?
I think shared. And then also, it might be for fourth, actually, because that's where the lighthouse classrooms are. And then the library has a cart of 20, but again, grades one and two are also using the Chromebooks at the building, so if they're taken for testing, there's a whole series of weeks where they don't have access to those devices.
So, can we just clarify?
Mm-hmm.
You said 120 to 140. Is that devices? Is that 100, 120,000? What do we...
No, devices.
So, you, for both...
For Chromebooks.
For each grade or grades?
Total.
Total, for three and four?
Yeah, for three and four.
You would need 120 to 140 devices?
Yes, probably.
Do you have a rough idea on how much that would cost?
They're running, well, we're getting an estimate on a different model of Chromebook, but if you were to estimate around 200 per, then we'd be safe, because there's also the licensing that we have to pay for. I can get you an accurate quote, though.
I'm trying to get an estimate on camera, so hold on one second.
28,000.
Thank you. So, 28,000, rough numbers, would get, would put us one-to-one in grades three and four?
Mm-hmm. So, we would be three through 12, one-to-one. In high school, of course, they take the devices with them. In the middle school, fifth grade and up, they're assigned during the day, but they're carrying them around and getting an incredible amount of use.
Yes, Mr. Conroy.
For the lighthouse classes, so those will be new next year?
Mm-hmm. Would you like a little description of what that means?
Yes.
Yes, please. Thank you.
So, this is an offshoot of a program called Fuse Rhode Island. Now, we have Fuse Massachusetts, and it is an opportunity for teachers from different districts. They're called Fuse Fellows. They come and coach us, we go and coach them, and they get some intensive training around blended and personalized learning and different instructional practices. So, we have a design team here in Millis of teachers, I don't think we ended up with any students, but teachers and administrators, and these Fuse Fellows, we have two assigned to our district. We meet, we planned and designed our vision around blended and personalized learning. We chose some early adopter teachers, teachers who are outside-the-box thinkers, willing to jump in and try something, always collaborating, sharing their ideas, sharing what they've learned, and really growing their practice. Those early adopter teachers are the ones who have lighthouse, they're called lighthouse classrooms. And what happens is they commit to trying out these instructional practices that they help choose, and they get coached in those instructional practices by these fellows. And then the same thing happens. We have our Fuse Fellow here, Chris Nardone. He is assigned to another district, and he does the same thing with them. So, it's a very big collaborative, and it's growing in Massachusetts, and we can have more Fuse Fellows and keep growing that way.
And how does that impact our technology needs?
A lot of what is done with blended and personalized learning is really scaled by technology. So, if you say you want to use your learning management system and be able to put up various levels of videos and resources and give them choice in how they learn, if they can't access them, then you miss a whole point there. Excuse me.
So, if, if we don't have the ability to upgrade that working, what does that do with this program?
That would cause probably some strain on the wireless infrastructure over there. It's not an impossible thing to fund. I don't see, I actually am already getting estimates for that, quotes for that, for the access points.
Fund within, fund within the budget we already have?
Yeah, that piece of, because as I said, I think those access points are going to come in very, they're going to be very helpful in this building after the fact as well.
Yeah, no, I, at the beginning, I thought, I thought what we were talking about is needs outside of, outside of the existing budget.
If we had help getting those things, it would certainly make them more doable, but we're going to be committed to making that wing of Clyde Brown very functional for next year, with all that's going on in there with testing and with the Fuse Lighthouse classrooms. That's a good thing.
If you, if you funded that out of the operating budget, the existing budget, would that emit, impact or limit some other projects that you would be doing?
Well, this year, we were able to get the Chromebooks that were needed for middle school to get them to one-to-one, and that came out of our budget. So, those kinds of things wouldn't happen if we were funding, say, the wireless project.
What do you mean it wouldn't have?
The funds wouldn't be there unless we were able to get end-of-year funds or find other ways to fund.
So...
So, if we bought, we bought how many? 40 Chromebooks to help finish off the one-to-one in sixth grade, and that, so that, those 40 Chromebooks were right out of the operational budget. So, if we were to fund the wireless, that money wouldn't be there for that, but it isn't as much as what we spent on Chromebooks, so that's all right.
But we don't need the Chromebooks to get...
For middle, right. But if we were to, say, try to fund some for Clyde Brown?
Yeah.
That would be...
Do you have any idea, what's, do you have a rough estimate on this network upgrade?
I believe it was about 6,000 or 8,000 for the two. I'd have to look back. I'd have to look back.
Is it fair to say less than 10 grand right now?
Yeah.
Do you think it would stay less than 10 grand?
I believe so, yes. It's been a busy week. I'm going to pull all my numbers together in my head.
So...
I can answer that for you tomorrow, though. I do have the, I have the quotes upstairs.
So, just in summary, to get grades three and four to one-to-one, which will benefit and help us in testing in next year, that's going to be roughly 28,000.
Mm-hmm.
That's a rough number.
Mm-hmm.
We'll say less than 30,000. And then the need to, the need to upgrade the network to Clyde Brown through temporary wiring and access points?
Mm-hmm.
We're looking at up to another, up to 10,000 and maybe less than that.
10, so probably 10, yeah.
So, we're looking at about a $40,000 investment.
And the testing is, although it's a big piece of it, it does seem to stretch from March till forever into the spring. Having those students online and used to typing and used to working in all the, in that digital environment is so crucial to them and their testing. So, having it through the school year, it's more than just the testing, I guess, is what I'm...
Well, when we first started one-to-one, it was, you know, we eventually wanted to become a district-wide one-to-one. I mean, we're, we're getting close, we're not there yet, but, so it wasn't about testing even.
Yep.
All those years ago, it was about just one-to-one device.
Mr. Chairman, question? So, just circling back to how you said everything that, for a lot of stuff that you wanted to do in your plan is already in the budget for next year, does that include, like, teacher PD time for these new, like, learning management systems and things like that? Is that already planned out and...
Some of that is planned out through the PD committee, which I'm a part of. One thing that we're doing a little differently is I have a group of almost 20 teachers and some administrators, and we're starting, and it's learning PD tomorrow, and they're doing this for PDPs. It's on their time. And basically, we're having this webinar to kind of kick it off, and then we're going to spend July developing sandbox classrooms essentially with model lessons and sample lessons and using all the tools and really diving deeply into the tools and the possibilities. And then they'll spend August developing their classrooms that they're going to use in the fall, and then that will grow from there. They'll be able to help their teams and PLCs from there. So, that kind of PD is starting to happen, and that's not something that hasn't added cost other than if we wanted extra training from its learning, we could pay a little bit more. But it's actually very minimal considering they let us tape it, the webinars or something we get to re-watch and revisit, so.
But in terms of, like, teacher learning curve, we're taking time out of their teaching day to do it. It's just in the summer on their own time if they want to learn how to do it.
This particular one is, but we'll be continuing into the fall with this group. And then, we talked about passion PLCs. I don't know if that's been mentioned here at all, but just teachers who have a particular interest in learning how to do something, some of their PD days in district could be dedicated to that as well, so.
Okay. You good?
I, I, I'll qualify, I know this, I just, I guess, what I'd like to see is, just as far with the estimates, how, how much of it is intended to be covered out of the existing operating budget? And if it was funded out of the operating budget, what would we not be doing that we had either originally planned to do or have historically done that we would not be able to do with those?
Let me pull that together for you.
Okay.
That's part of the analysis I'm working on now and hoping to meet with our new business manager to talk through as well.
I am. I'd just like to say what Jen has accomplished in one year here, less than a year now, is tremendous, and it is visionary leadership. It's, she's been very inclusive and reached out to a lot of stakeholders, gotten a lot of input, staff, students, and parents, and it's, the online registration will be happening. We have online payments now. There are just so many areas that already she's touched and made big vast improvement in, so it's been an exciting year.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go back, let's backtrack to some of the action items. First action item is the consideration to approve the June 5, 2018 School Committee meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Briggs.
I move that we approve the minutes from our June 5 meeting.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moved. Next on the action item, let's, let's move the, let's hold the transfers for a second. I'd rather, I'd put all the budget stuff together.
Yep. Fee waiver.
Consideration to approve a fee waiver for the Metro West AAU basketball. And we have it in our packets, right?
Yes, yeah.
Let me skip to it, sorry. So, Metro West Basketball Academy is looking for a reduction in fees by how much? Hold on. What is it?
Well, traditionally, it's been 50% reduction.
Is that 50%? Does 30?
Steve, this isn't what's on the, this one's not the same thing as what's on the This is Metro West Basketball Academy Camp, which is the camp that, the camp that gets run.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I thought based on the agenda, we had waiver requests from Metro West. And I, I thought based on the agenda, we had waiver requests for Metro West Basketball, Millis Youth Basketball for the Metro West season and full AAU program with boys and the girls.
So I don't see them here. Do we have any paperwork on them? Did they submit paperwork?
They did not submit. This came through Mr. Conroy. So nobody else submitted. Mr. Fallon did submit just recently a form for the summer camp.
April of '19.
Okay.
So that's next April.
The AAU boys and the AAU girls have already received waivers for this summer. Mr. Adams and Mr. Fallon's camps, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, no.
That's not AAU basketball.
So...
That was Mohawk and, I'm sorry, Mohawk Pride, those have already got waived.
Yeah, those are separate.
No. What, what I was informed and was asked about was because we, a couple months ago, adjusted the fees for Metro West Basketball, Millis Youth Basketball for Metro West into June, to June 30. We waived, we reduced the fees by 50%. Metro West Basketball is considering using or requesting for gym time potentially this summer for summer, for some, the summer season. And putting it through for the whole year. So, but if they didn't submit it, then, then that's fine. But that's what I thought. And then, yeah, Coach Fallon was going to submit his AAU, which is April and May and June of next year, but do it, kind of, it was all going to be one instead of doing it piecemeal, was why they were all going to do it.
So Metro West is running in the summer?
For summer basketball.
When does it start?
It already started. They haven't used any time.
Because we approved them up until 6:30.
Right.
So they run in July?
Yeah, summer basketball runs into August. They're not using the gym. What, normally it's outdoor, it's outdoor time. And so if coaches want to practice, they use the rec court, they use the town park court. But absent, well, now by the, with the town court not being there, they were thinking of potentially using some indoor space if it was available. And so they were looking for, they were going to come and ask for fees. But they didn't submit it.
They don't submit, we can't act.
Yep, so that's fine.
Feel free to contact them and let them know that. We have limited meetings over the summer, but they can submit again. But we can't act on something that's not submitted. We do have...
The basketball academy.
We have a basketball academy and it's Metro West. So I'm going to make a, I'm going to make a determination that if there's something on the agenda around Metro West Basketball, we can, we can look at the academy. So there is a request...
Mr. Chair, though, this, this came to us not from them, but we did, when Mr. Conroy sent me the email, we went to our records to try to find what it might pertain to, and this was the only thing. So theoretically, they have not requested a waiver for this.
Okay, so we're not going to act on that either. So Metro West is...
So then who filled this out?
That's, I've had that.
That's just a copy.
It's from April. This is the booking form. It's not a request for a waiver.
All right.
Oh, all right.
All right.
Thank you.
No problem. Moving on, basketball theme. Consideration to relocate the town basketball court. Mr. Conroy?
Sure. I guess I would start by, it's not necessarily relocating the town basketball court because the town basketball court that got taken down will be replaced when the school is built.
Temporarily relocated.
Yeah. So this started with when Mike Banks from the rec department came in a few months ago and asked about whether we'd be willing to work with him on finding space for some basketball hoops to replace the town court so that the community could use them in lieu of the town court during construction. He had mentioned at the time that the rec department was aware or had access to donations that would be able to fund this. Unfortunately, none of that ever necessarily came to fruition. He came back again and changed the whole request, I think as anybody who's here remembered. He then started talking about a permanent court down, that he was going to go to the elementary school building committee to design into the school. So I took it upon myself to do a little bit of research on what exactly it would cost to do some more temporary or at least quasi-temporary hoops, finding locations, one, you know, basically in the parking lots, just using the parking lots during the summer as empty space. I was able to get quotes from the company, Mr. Hoop, who is the same company that installed and put in the rectory court hoops. Those were funded by a benefactor who was a member of the church over there. He came out, I had gotten some initial estimates. I actually spoke with Denise and Craig Schultz on the elementary school building committee and talked to them about whether or not, because the rec donation wasn't coming to fruition, whether this was something the elementary school building committee felt would be in their purview to fund, given that it was in relation to the construction going on. They both thought that that was a good idea. And last week, the elementary school building committee voted to fund up to $5,000 for two basketball hoops and paint that could be placed wherever. John Engler and I met with Mr. Hoop, the Mr. Hoop Company, last Tuesday morning, and we identified a couple of locations, well, this back parking lot right out here, the small one, two spots in there where two half courts could be put. The quote we have in there is $4,999.98. The reality is, he also threw in, they, the company included free painting, which was $900 value, and pads for the pole, which is $300 value. So they're chipping in $1,200 on their own. And that allows them, because they wanted to put in the biggest, sturdiest hoop, so it's the exact hoops that are at the rectory court. So largest 72-inch backboard, so the hoops themselves are $2,500 apiece. So the current plan, and Nancy, John spoke with both the fire chief and police chief, and John let Nancy know earlier today that neither of them had a concern with the location. So where they are designed to go is, if you know this back parking lot where the volleyball net, volleyball court is, so one of them will face, will be directly parallel to the volleyball court facing the parking lot, obviously. And the other one will be just inside, as you're coming into the parking lot, it'll be inside the fence, kind of, it'll be facing perpendicular to the other one. And so it'll be inside the fence. So you have a half court here, a half court down over here.
I do, I understand that we checked with both the fire chief and the police chief, but I think we should anticipate noise complaints from the neighbors. I think that, especially in the summer, I think we should look at limiting access to the courts. I think we should ensure that we have working security cameras in that area. They're obviously not being monitored live, but in the event that something happens, we can go back to the tape. And I just think that we have to be mindful of, we're, you know, we're inviting at off-hours people onto the campus, which is an open campus, people can come. But now we're putting them behind kind of the major lines of sight in the back of the building. So I think it's fine, we'll have to deal with it, but I'm less concerned about vandalism or breaking and enterings into the building, I'm more concerned about noise complaints. So I think we have to put a reasonable timeframe for hours of use when school's not in session, which is effectively now through August, whatever the date we start back on, so.
So I think a timer string, we could do, we should probably post a sign regardless.
Yep.
We have an alternative option, which would be to put them in the main parking lot, so on the backside of the main parking lot, which would have them closer to where the original court was, more centralized away from neighbors over on Ridge or Spring Street.
Towards the back, near the football field or the other side?
Yeah, like if you put them in the back.
But the bleachers.
Yeah, so you could put them out there. And we talked about that when we were walking through. One, one of the reasons why I, why I didn't think that was necessarily the most optimal was because then by putting it in the back, you, it is segregated, sorry.
Sorry.
Putting in the back, it's segregated so that everybody who's using and driving can use this main parking lot, whereas with the hoops there, people are going to use this main parking lot anyway, so.
And they may drive kids down to drop them off and there's traffic.
Right. And so you're just taking up a lot more.
And Mr. Chair, the, we can monitor the, what is viewed by the cameras from home, and people do that occasionally, especially if there's reason to do that. So what we could do is look into having that, I think it's an online system, correct, John, that you log into, it's in the cloud, so police could also log in and view it in the cloud and just have it maybe visible. But I agree with the hour, limiting the hours of use as well.
So I don't know what, I don't know if the town court had hours of use. I don't think it, if it did, the sign was...
I don't think the rectory does either for that matter. I don't think there's...
I don't think there's a sign.
I don't think there's a sign there either.
No.
I mean, realistically, in the summer, nine, is it nine o'clock? It's not going to be lit.
Can you say dusk? Or is that too big?
Um, yeah, actually probably, a lot of parks have like dawn to dusk, so yeah, dusk. I guess dusk is fine.
Because then it covers you all year round, regardless of when dusk is.
And then they, in social studies, they can teach them what dusk is.
Hey, Google.
Art class.
Is it dusk? Yes, it is. Go home. All right, so this was funded by the elementary school building committee.
Correct.
Do we, I don't think we have to take a vote to put it on our property. Do we have to take it?
Yeah, I think we have to approve.
Just because of, oh, the accepting of the...
No, I just think we should approve actually doing the work.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just have one other question. I know we talked about being a temporary solution, but I would assume that these are being placed, is it permanently being placed?
Yeah, we don't have to take them down.
So you don't have to take them down.
Now, what, what the gentleman, Mr. Hoop, did say is if we wanted to, they came out, or John said, we could, we could take the bolt, we could unbolt them, take them off the thing, so the pole and the hoop could come down, we could store it in the winter and then put them back up if we didn't want to leave them up, one in the real winter, but also if we found come school, it wasn't helpful to have them there as a temptation when more people are using these parking lots and traffic. Because that was, that was my thing of leaving them there year-round is come September, when, you know, you got kids out there trying to still use them and people need to come into the park to go to work, that doesn't work out.
So why don't we, why don't we, the hours of operation during school, they will not be used except for school-related activities, right? A teacher could bring them out there, I don't know. I don't know if that would ever happen, but I think we should leave it open during the school, right? But then on the weekends, so non-school hours, people can use that. And then we can make a determination at the weather at some point. I wouldn't want to take them down in September just to take them down, unless it becomes an issue.
Yeah, yeah. If it's not an issue, then it's fine, but it...
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
I would make a motion that we approve the installment of two basketball hoops and the painting as proposed by Mr. Hoop Company.
Motion been made?
Seconded.
Everyone seconded. Denise seconded. A motion been made, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right, motion carried. Okay. Next item, I guess we can start getting into, why don't we, why don't we look at the capital So in our packets is a capital expenses spreadsheet. And it identifies what's been funded this year in '18. The top part of it talks about the warrant, the Springtown warrant articles and the total amount of $235,000. Those are already funded. And then there are a number of other items listed, prioritized, one being the highest, two being medium, and three being the least high, the least priority, with potential funding sources being earmark funds from the state. And everyone has a copy, I believe, I was going to read notes, we already had, we had one, I'm sorry, but...
That's okay.
It was given to us on the behalf, Representative Linsky, I believe, carried this for us. It was helpful to try to, for us to recoup some funding from the Clyde Brown air quality issue several years back, and it came in the amount of $150,000. I believe the town had allocated, or we, there was a warrant article, and we reimbursed them, what was it, 62?
61,000. We have not yet done that process, but we, we will...
So in the amount of 61,000. So what we have is 180, $89,000 in earmark funds that we have to spend on building-related issues. Then we have end-of-the-year funding, and then we have facility rental savings as well. So the total cost of all expenses listed detailed below is 348,000. But if you look on the sheet, really, it's the only ones with the potential funding source are the ones that are in play. And there is a mix of those, of ones and twos. None of the threes are being brought forward as potential items to be funded this evening. So Mr. Engler is here in case we have any questions or concerns about any of these potential expenses. Some of them are to continue the work in the auditorium around the sound system, seating, because we funded some seating out of the warrant article this spring, but was not going to be, wasn't going to be enough to cover all of the seating. So those are two issues related directly to the auditorium. We have baseball field repairs and reconstruction. That number, oh, that's to the additional money that was not funded at town, town meeting. We have some sound system, we have some HVAC AC units, hard drives, memories for laptops, technology, some curriculum materials. So you see the list. Does anyone have any questions about any specific item on the list?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Karen.
I'm just questioning why we have locker painting and repair as a, as a priority three, and I don't see anything here on locker painting or repair for the high school. This looks like it's just the middle school. Just curious on how we came up with priorities in some of the facilities.
So the administrative team, and feel free to join us if you'd like.
Come on up, John.
The administrative team went over the list. We identified what we... We identified what we felt were essential items. The locker painting and repair in the middle school would be very nice, but it was deemed to be cosmetic versus required or essential. It would be nice.
No, I don't disagree that it would be nice. I, where I disagree is that if we keep deferring some of these issues, that it's going to become essential pretty quickly, and I would respectfully argue that it's not needed.
It's now needed, you said?
Yes.
Yes, now, now, okay.
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Conroy.
I would differ slightly in your comment that none of this is put before, that the things with threes on them are not put before us because they are before us.
The superintendent and the admin team did.
They're not, they have not been recommended, however, we can modify and adjust this list.
That's correct.
Also, Mr. Chair, we are still determining how much in end-of-year funding we will have, so it, we could very well end up with enough funds to fund, you know, various number threes.
Right, but to Mr. Conroy's point, that's correct, it's that we have, we have funds up top, we know how much funds are up top, there may be additional funds, so.
Mr. Chair, I have one other question.
Yes.
Can I ask where these fit in the all-over capital plan for the school that we, that we looked at earlier this year and prioritize?
I'm not sure if I still have that. I remember if you had that back as a gentleman.
I have it, if you need it, I have a copy.
So while you're looking for that, can I ask you a question?
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So the, is the point of this spreadsheet that the ones, like we are planning to fund these and the potential funding source, like those things will be funded with those sources and the ones that don't have funding, or are you asking?
It's a request, the admin team is bringing a request to the school committee.
Okay.
After identifying end-of-the-year savings out of these three pots.
Okay.
They're, they're making a request to us, the school committee does have the final say.
Okay.
On what will be voted.
Okay.
And where, where the money will be spent.
Can I have a question after that?
And then one final distinction, just if I may, we have, for the earmark, legislative earmark funds, we have until March of 2019 to expend those funds, and facility rental is a revolving account, so it can be spent anytime between now and the end of next fiscal year or even beyond. End-of-year money is the critical category for approval tonight because we have to get those POs in by next, June 30th, by next Friday.
So how much is in each of these funds?
Pardon me?
How much are in the earmark funds that we have to spend?
89,000.
And.
And what about the end-of-year?
End-of-year funds, those total 91,683 dollars.
That's what we have available, or that's what you're requesting?
That's what is on the list, and that's what we are still identifying, and April's been working hard and they've been furiously inputting, as you see by our stack of bills tonight, all the end-of-year POs to encumber the money or to get it ready to go, so there may be additional, more than the 91,000 available. So it probably would be prudent to add, add to it, and then things from the number threes on the list, and then if there weren't sufficient funds in end-of-year savings from electricity and those other sources, then we could come back and identify a different source of money or say we'll have to wait until facility rental builds back up, because facility rental does build up to about 25,000 per year. There's 25,000 in there now approximately.
So right now, for end-of-the-year, it's 91,000, you said 683?
Yes.
That's what we have available to spend?
That's what we have avail, right, as of, right now, as of today.
Okay.
And they've also identified 91,683 dollars in purchases.
Okay.
Facility rental is.
Sorry, we have a question.
Yeah, but, so we don't actually, we have, there's 100 and, there's 198,445 in savings that we have to spend. The proposal before us is to spend 91 of that and put 82,000 into school choice. So really, what we're starting with, if we look at this schedule here, as of now, there's identified 250,116 in savings. We have shortfalls in, and the associated line items, contracted services, sped tuition, electricity, program with other district, and then miscellaneous. We then have two line items that are in deficit, other instruction materials and equipment for sports. Then the net of those is 198,445, or 55. On top of that, there is $42,000 in unspent transportation, gas, oil, and maintenance, which this proposal says to transfer it over into the revolving fund. So what we have is really 240,455 of unspent FY18 budget. The proposal to us is to transfer 42,000 of expenses out of transportation revolving into the budget, thus increasing the transportation revolving fund, which is currently sitting at 164,000, so make that 206,000. Spend 91,000 of the, spend 91,000 of it on the items on this capital list identified as end-of-year, and then transfer the other 82,000 into choice, which the choice balance, because of the 150 that we already moved into choice, we're going to end the, if we put no more into choice, we will end this year with 457,000 in choice, knowing that we're going to, we're budgeted to spend about 200,000 more than we're bringing in next year. So that would leave us still with 257 at the end of next year.
Okay.
So kind of as we, so, we, what's in front of us is a proposal of what to do with the 240, for us to evaluate and decide if there's any changes we want to make to that proposal.
And some of that is on the sheet of what they want to do with it?
And I, I don't want, I don't want to use 240, I want to, because I want to take that 42, that's going into transportation. That's, that's, we'll deal with transportation separate.
First off, that, we can have a discussion about whether that 42 goes to transportation.
Sure.
We can, we can decide to use it for transportation things, but to increase a transportation balance to 200,000 when we don't need it for 200, like, that's a significant balance that to leave in transportation. We can.
You're suggesting that, I'm suggesting we leave that balance.
No, I don't, no.
You understand where we're going to go down the road.
Yeah.
On transportation. We have transportation funding.
But, but I also, right, and we can talk about purchasing transportation vans, put them all, put, put this in, but we can also have the discussion of having 168,000 in transportation and still spending 40 or 50 out of that, still leaving us with 100,000 of unspent transportation funds that would free up what we do with that 42,000 sitting on that side of the piece of paper. So we have.
So if you want, if your discussion is what's the total savings that we're looking at, that's part of it?
Yeah, it's 240, right.
But now let's, all right, so there's 240, I get that.
Yep.
So now let's start looking at this, so.
Yeah.
All right, where do you want to go first?
Well, we, if we, we can, if we want to talk about the 42 and decide what we want to do with transportation, so that then we're talking about how much do we have to apply to this capital list, or, and then to school choice, we can, then we know what we're dealing with.
So we know exactly what's in the bucket to spend on some of this.
Right.
What's put forward.
Right.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, or anybody. Do we have any limitations on what we can spend the 42,000 on, so because, do we have to spend it on?
No.
So we can spend it on?
It's in the operating budget.
Okay, thank you.
The only limitation is on what's in the revolving fund.
Okay, and because that's not in the revolving fund, it doesn't have a limitation?
I mean, we have 101,000 dollars in salaries in revolving. I mean, if we didn't want to purchase or think about purchasing vans, we could take, we could move money, move money out of choice, not choice, I'm calling it choice, the transportation revolving, and, and take some of those salaries out.
Right, but I think that would have the effect of increasing our transportation revolving balance to 200,000, which I personally, I think is high, especially if, since we haven't bought a sped van this year.
No, my point is, instead of carrying 101,000 dollars in salaries in there, move it down, reduce how much we're going to carry in there. We still have, we still have a huge balance.
The end-of-year savings, though, doesn't impact what we do next year.
That's right, we have to spend.
If we were talking, if we knew that this 100,000.
Was going to be there.
Was there next year, then we could talk about adjusting the FY19 budget, but I think that's not a conversation we're ready for tonight.
No, we're not.
So it's really, what do we do with the 240?
Do we have the, do we have a, the van list? When was the last time? We do have it in our packets.
And when it's correct that we have not bought a van this current school year, and we do have a couple of vehicles with high mileage. I did talk to Mary Jane Driscoll, our transportation director, today. She agrees that it would be great to purchase a van this summer and then see where we stand in terms of need and the routes, how many students and what the routes and if any can be combined, et cetera, and then look at it either late summer, fall, or winter to purchase a second one or come back to the committee for a second one if needed.
Well, we didn't purchase any in '15, we didn't purchase any in '18 yet, right? And of the ones in service right now, I, I get what Mary Jane's saying, but we're creeping up. We got, we have one with, we have two, one, two, two with 100,000 plus, we have one with 90,000, we have a couple that are right at 8,000, I just.
If we could get two and replace van 10 and 12 and let them move into spare.
We can then dump the 2,002 spare.
Right, and the car.
And, oh, get rid of that car.
Thankfully.
The car is a donation.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we.
And then, then our oldest would be the wheelchair van in 2010, our oldest spare.
Right, which I don't, where's the oldest, yeah. We have the capacity. A van, I believe, the last time we purchased was 24, roughly 24, I would be a little careful if someone wanted to make a motion, that would give us a little more wiggle room, up to, I'd say 25.
So the others? We have the green, we can make that green, we have to buy vehicles that are, makes it a little bit more expensive. Not a ton, but a few thousand dollars, we should probably tack a few, just for the motion purposes.
Should we split it up to 30?
Yeah, I would, just to be safe.
And Mr. Chair, since we are at the end of the fiscal year, getting the three quotes and processing it all by the end of, you know, using end-of-year money is going to be a real rush for a van, whereas if we do transfer that amount, maybe 28,000 to let it carry over in revolving by moving some of the expenses out of revolving into operational budget, then it gives her the summer month, months to do that process versus hurry up, a real rush.
Well, are we saying that we need to buy a van before we do all these number one and two priorities? Is that what you're saying?
No, I think we were just trying to look at, trying to keep transportation together and trying to look at transportation.
Transportation money or transportation.
I think it's, I think it's vans, possibly. I think, I think we, I think Mark's initial idea of getting two and bumping 10 and 12 down and getting rid of the car, and then one of the other spare vans.
Well, one of the action, or the items on this is bus routing software for $10,000. That would fall under that transportation per unit, too.
Is it on?
Yeah, the routing software is approximately $10,000 for the first year. After that, it will be a maintenance fee of around 3,000 per year, but the first year purchasing the software is more expensive.
Well, if we, if we purchase bus routing software out of transportation, that would free up 10,000 from the projected or the request, and maybe that's money that could be spent on painting walkers.
Well, you said you want to keep transportation with transportation.
No, I mean, if we're taking it out of, we're freeing up money.
I understand, the 42, 10,000 of that 42 could go to the bus routing software.
Yeah, but we also have the end-of-the, we also have an additional 164 balance, too, so there's, there's a lot of money right now in play in, in transportation, just at the revolving account as well.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
So this year, our total expenses out of transportation was 133,000. So if we were to, and I don't remember, I don't think the self-imposed minimum threshold in transportation was 100,000.
It was not.
So even if we were to set it at 100,000 or maybe 90, we could, if we had it at 90, we could do the two vans and the 10,000 out of the transportation revolving, which would leave us at 90,000 end-of-year in transportation, allows for the timing of getting the bids, et cetera. It then also frees the 42,000 into our ability to address the more capital stuff, and we've just reduced the ask by 10,000 because we just paid for.
You were talking, and I was explaining to Ms. Rush that maybe that's locker painting, one never knows.
She's not going to let that one go.
So the, again, since we're up against the end of the year, the fiscal year, the challenge is getting invoices and POs in place by next Friday for all of these.
This is, he's talking about revolving, oh, for the vans.
If we.
No, we're talking about paying for the vans, paying for two vans and the.
Routing software.
Routing software out of the revolving, so you don't have to get them in by June 30.
Yes, then the locker painting would need to.
So is it safe to say that for anything that hasn't, that doesn't have a funding source, that we don't have like estimates or invoices or things like that? Do we have it for everything that's identified with a funding source?
Correct. John, do you have quotes yet? We do have estimates, but not three quotes, which is what we, what we.
So we.
Like to have for proper procurement, to, to try to get three quotes and compare those. So we have good estimates on those, but not real quotes.
So are these, sorry, so if I look at the, I'm just going, I'm going to stick with the locker one, just because of the dollar figure.
Yeah.
But are we bound by any regulation statewide as far as the quotes? The dollar figure, I think, is underneath any threshold where we would be required to get quotes? But do we, do we, do we have any requirement? I kind of don't think we do, I think it's 10.
Right.
I thought it was 10 and then 25.
You need to get quotes, and correct me if I'm wrong, Nancy, unless it's a bid vendor, right?
Right, if it's sole source, like our Apple computers or something, you don't need. need to get the quotes. But April, is it $25,000 the limit that we, we have to go out to bid?
Yes.
$25,000.
It is, yeah.
Where we actually have to go out to bid. For example, the baseball and the auditorium seating, both are full RFP processes because they're, they're greater than the 40, or $25,000. But the others, the others are just good practice to try to get three quotes.
Hold on a second.
Okay.
No, everyone is, let's, let's start somewhere. Mark, you started to go with the transportation. You going to make a motion or not?
Yeah, so I would make a motion that we approve the purchase of two sped vans up to, up to $30,000 each van for a total of $60,000, as well as the, where is it?
Bus routing.
The bus routing software up to $10,000 out of the transportation revolving fund.
Second.
Motion been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Hang on a minute.
So both of those, Jody, are out of transportation revolving?
So two vans, $30,000, $30,000 each, up to $60,000 total. The bus routing software up $10,000?
Up to $10,000.
Up to?
Both of them are out of transportation revolving. So that brings, that's $70,000. That brings the ending balance, if we looked at the, if we spent all of that.
94.3.
94.3. Okay, so that's revolving, transportation revolving is off the table right now. So now the question, let's, let's logic step to the next one, is what do we want to do? Do we want to add the $42,000 in transportation, the operating transportation fund? Is, are we going to put this together for the other capital expenses?
Does that require us moving it?
No.
No, it's just, it's just part of the bucket of the end of the year.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I just make a comment about just the capital list that we have? So we spent a lot of, I assume you guys spent a lot of money on, on the engineering study a few years back, and then we spent some time this year putting together that capital plan. And I know that some of it may not be applicable, or some of it that we've already completed. But it is the, the capital list that we put forth to the Capital Planning Committee for the, for the town. I think that we need to, you know, I understand that this year it may be too late, but going forward, we need to look at this more strategically and look at the deferred maintenance for the school and be able to make decisions based off of a, a broader capital plan. Makes sense?
Yes. I agree with that, and that should be one of our strategic focuses that we were talking about at the last meeting as we proceed into the next year, of looking at an item, either a cost center or a specific area. And I think facilities and capital expenses is definitely a huge bucket that we need to tackle.
And I think just one more point is that, you know, I don't, the administration might not be focused solely on deferred maintenance for schools, but that's where we're going to have to rely on you to make sure that those come forward. Because if we keep deferring this, we're going to be in the same situation here that we were in Clyde Brown, and we want to make sure that doesn't happen.
I concur.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Conrad.
Can I ask, because I don't have that in front of me, are there non, are there items on there that are not a huge significant value, like a roof, that aren't on this list that we should at least understand what we're not doing?
I can't recall off the top of my head, but I do know that there were some smaller items. They're not all large, big-ticket items. You know, painting schedules are on here, lockers are on there, you know, locker room upgrade, like all of that kind of stuff is on here. So it doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, we're replacing a roof or we're redoing.
But this, right, like this is stuff with $240,000, again, timing-wise, like what are we not doing? Because truthfully, there are, you know, we could put money into choice and manage it through the FY '19 budget.
Correct.
There are things that we, you know, we don't, so the way I'm viewing this now is we have $240,000 that we have to do something with. We can't leave it unspent in the operating budget. It doesn't mean we have to spend it on this list.
Exactly.
And if we're hindered by timing, we can move some into choice with the understanding that it's to buy ourselves time to address maintenance through the FY '19 budget, which would allow us to, for a year, maybe spend money out of choice on something in the operating budget that allows us to shift operating budget money down to the facilities line to take care of some deferred maintenance. And we can map all that out. So I guess, as we go through this, if there are things on this, on that list that we think should, that aren't on this list, that we should be truly considering, then maybe we don't spend 240 on this list. We set aside 40, 50, whatever that is, to say, no, we've got deferred maintenance that we really probably should take care of, and we can figure out how to do it in FY '19.
I don't know if we have enough information to make that call tonight, because we didn't take it down to that level here. I mean, there is some significant maintenance that are, that's on here that was, you know, due in 2014, that we, you know, that we haven't addressed yet. I think that we need to look at this, and I think that this plan needs to become the basis for capital expenditures for the school going forward, for the, for the facility side. I just feel like, you know, facilities and the upkeeps of the buildings tend to be just, if we have extra money, and if, again, if we keep doing that, we're going to get ourselves into a tough situation in a few years if we keep just, you know, if you look at this, again, some of it's athletic fields and all that, but if you even go up, it's, it was a million dollars in 2014. Now, again, some of that's not applicable, and we could have addressed a lot of it. And when typically, when you do an engineering study like this, they throw everything at you, understanding that a lot of it, you're going to either defer to out years or you just won't do. So I just, you know, when we did the first pass at re-looking at this, I don't think we got down to the detail of saying, hey, so for this line item, you know, I don't know, pick carpet repair. No, that's not something that we plan on doing. Let's move it out. So we really have a true capital plan for the facilities maintenance of the school. Or we can say, this is something that we probably will never do and take it out, but have a reason why. So if somebody comes back and says, why didn't you do this? We, we know why. But I just, we've started, and I think we have a good starting point, but I think we should build off of this. So at the end of the year, next year, when we have $240,000, we have a clear, you know, list, or we have a clear understanding of what the maintenance is needed in the school, you know, and what can wait a year or two, or what really needs to start to be looked, because it, maybe it's, you know, maybe it is a new roof, and, you know, it's $200,000, so we need to plan for that, and we need to plan for that soon.
Hundred grand, yep, yep.
I also think one thing that we need to move in, and we, and we're making progress, but it took, it took a while to get to a technology replacement plan. It took a while to get to a vehicle replacement plan. I think we're now at the beginning stages of this capital plan.
Oh, I agree.
And I think that's the next step, because I'm looking at this, and I know they said, Tetra Tech said all in 2014, and we backed out to Clyde Brown, we needed to spend 11, 11 million 900,000.
Yeah.
And that's clearly not going to happen. But I think, over the course of the next year, starting this summer, we can start to look at what is a realistic capital plan that we need to follow every year. Just like the town, the town made a commitment that they're going to start putting money into a fund.
Yeah.
And that people are going to, from different departments are going to come to it and say, this is what we need this year, and there's going to be a balancing act. So internally, we need to kind of follow the lead of the town, and I know we were at the table, that we need to come up with, whether it's not really a replacement plan, but it's a facility maintenance plan, whatever we want to call it, and start, and one thing that I would do is I would back out, I know there are capital expenses, but I would back out the vans, I would back out the curriculum and the technology, and I would put them in buckets, understanding that they're all capital items, but I think we need to have a facility-related bucket.
And that's, I mean, some of that, there's some extra stuff in here, so that's why it's a little, the number might be a little scary.
No, but, but overall, that's not as, it's still the facility that's the crux of of that number. So I think there's some work to be done, and I know that you, Nancy and John, sat down, and then you sat, you did a lot of work on that committee. So I think we, we need to just take that to the next step forward to where we're, we're in the same place where we are with the technology and the transportation and the vans, I think.
Agreed.
It's going to take a little time, but we have to do it, because I echo Kerry's statements, is that if we keep on kicking the can, and then if it ever gets to the point of, if we let this building run down and we need to go for a new building, that is not probably going to fly in this town. So we have to, we have to do what we can to keep this building up and stretch it out as long as we can, prior to looking at any sort of rehab or, or in addition, whatever it looks like in 10 years from now, because 12 years ago, we said it was 10 to 12, so in 10 years. Do you have something?
No, I'm good.
So, we look at this list now, and we try to figure out what we want to do on the list. Mark made the point that
Yeah.
We don't have to spend the list now. We can spend some of it. We can push some of it out. We can have further discussions. Mark, I hear some muttering over there. Anything?
So, the entire list is $348,133.
Minus $10,000.
He's not done yet.
Take out the $10,000, take out the $89,000 that is, that has been identified as earmark, leaves $249,133. Back out $80,000 for the lighting for the auditorium. Means the entire list in front of us excluding the lighting would be $169,133. We have $244,55. Leaves us, so if we did everything on the list, now we can have a discussion about timing, but if we did everything on the list, we would still have $71,322 to transfer into choice, which would allow us a little bit of breathing room to possibly address some things, or just, we, the other thing is, we just don't have anything else on the list, unless we can do something with the 70 for the lighting in the auditorium.
So you said, just, let's walk through this one more time. So you looked at, the whole list was 1, 348, 133.
Yep.
You backed out $10,000 for the bus routing.
Yep. We have $89,000 from the state funding.
Okay.
So that leaves 249.
So you backed that out. You backed out the earmark.
So that leaves $249,133. I just pulled the lighting for the auditorium out because I, that's a, it's just a big number, and I think there's legitimate value in having that funded as a warrant article at some point. So that means that the rest of the list would cost $169,133. The funds we have available is $244,55.
Yep.
So we can do everything on this list and still have $70,000 that we can move into choice, or we can put it in facility rental, or we can put it, I mean, I suppose, I don't have numbers in front of me. If we could put it into facility rental, if there was any operating costs that we were currently paying out of facility rental, because that would free up, probably not, we'd probably have to go through choice to deal with it, which is fine.
So, April and Terry, limitations on use of choice funds for facilities, are there?
Yeah, we're going to have to do some, what, what we can do is, in the '19 budget, we cover
We'd have to transfer.
We cover operating costs into choice to free that up for one year, to be able to move operating money down into the transportation or facility line that would allow us to pay for these appropriately.
Yep.
So what would we move? One more time?
So, so let's just use, let's say, the, the Brookfield improvement, $8,000. We've got to go get a bid for that, and we're not going to have time to get that done by June 30. So we're going to, instead of, so what we're going to do is, we're going to transfer $18,000 into school choice right now. So that money is there on July 1, going into next fiscal year. We then, in order to do the Brookfield, we got to pay for it out of the operating budget. So now, we're going to need to cover, we're going to have to take it out of the operating budget, but that means we're going to need to find a school choice appropriate expense to shift into choice to take the $8,000.
Would that, would that be true if we were to do, say, the locker room upgrade, or?
So what we need to do is decide how much of the number threes legit, truly can't get done, and we may just say blanket, none of the threes, we'll just move it all into choice. But what of, what of the number threes will we definitely not have time to get? And that's the number we need to move into choice, plus the $70,000.
When you say not have time to get, you mean by June 30?
Correct.
Yes. So I think it's all of the, I think it's all of the, I think it's everything from, anything that doesn't have a funding source, so from convert storage into office? Is that, is that fair, Nancy and John?
Yeah. Minus excluding the lighting for the auditorium.
Yep, yep.
And then I, I question whether, given the amount of other work we're doing, and this is actually a moot point, so I should probably not even say it, but I don't think the locker room upgrade can easily be done this summer with so much else going on in the auditorium and baseball field and all the other work. But if the money's in choice, it could get done, you know, some other time period, we'll figure it out.
But if we, if we funded it tonight, right, or if we moved it around, and on 6/19 next year, they literally could be hitting a hammer through the wall. You're already moving stuff out into the hall.
Yeah.
So we could expend the funds in '19 and start the work in '19, right? So I mean, presented with money, we need to be creative in getting it done, right? I understand that there's a, but I mean, we should try to, we should try to find whatever legal means necessary to complete the work. But if we move money around, and it's, it's there in the bank, and we're starting work next June at this time, you know, as long as we expend the funds in the next year, there's nothing wrong with that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I know I could be pushing my luck.
You're not pushing your luck, this is a discussion.
But if we're doing the middle school, the lockers upstairs, can we do the lockers downstairs?
If, when the time comes, we're presented with a price and that money's in there, well,
We're also taking, we moved $89,000 in earmark out.
No, what we, no, we're putting, so it's, it's 63,250 are the, are the number threes. On top of that, we're putting $71,000 in, that we're not marking for anything at this point in time.
For anything.
So if, when the middle school lockers are up, there's an additional $7, $10,000 for the high school lockers, that would theoretically come out of the $70,000 that we just put aside.
Is that something we could look into?
Possibly. Most of that money is for repair, and it's in desperate repair, because it can't, has been kicked, is the upstairs, is the middle school. So, high school, I think they had, I thought that the ones across the hallway have been added recently.
Those are newish.
Down here or up here as well, so I think that's.
These ones down here are new?
I think the ones just in the live, near the live room.
This, right, this corner, those are relatively new. They were at, and maybe, yeah.
Possibly, again, I wasn't sure what happened, so.
Okay.
Possibly, again, I wasn't sure what happened. So, but I do know that the middle school is in need of repair before painting. Of course, we wanna make sure they're operable and they're safe before we look for-
Sure. So when they're doing that, can you, can we at least get a quote for, I know, especially the walkers right down here, the bottom kick plates are all kicked in?
Yep.
So maybe it's just as simple as replacing the kick plates and then getting a inventory of them, that we can do that?
Or just putting a piece of wood-
Or doing something like that, so they can't be kicked in?
Yep, right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
All right. I make a motion that we approve the funding of all items on the list presented with a number one or a number two priority, excluding the bus routing software. I also, so let's do that motion first.
Wait, okay, hold on. Can you walk me through that?
Say it again, say it again, Mark.
Can you walk me through that?
So, we're funding-
So ones and twos?
Everything from ones and twos, with excluding the bus routing software.
Right.
From earmark funding for the first two, four, six, seven items, the remainder of the list will be funded out of end-of-year savings, which means the list, the list that has three items as facility rental, we're not using facility rental for.
So funding all ones and twos and the capital expenses excluding the bus routing software with end-of-the-year funding, I mean, with the earmark funding?
And end-of-year.
Earmark and end-of-year. Should we give the totals for the earmark?
Yeah, so the earmark is 89,000. The end-of-year money is 63,250.
Yeah, yeah. I was, I hit facility rental.
No, no, sorry.
It looked like it was more-
It should be 81, maybe?
81,683 is what I got before.
81,683, it should be correct.
Yeah, for end of year.
81,683.
Okay.
So it was 63,93.
The 63,250 is the number threes, sorry.
Okay, okay.
So end of the year is 81,683.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And earmark is 89.
Correct.
Is that it, Mark?
That's that motion.
So funding of all number ones and twos on capital expenses excluding the bus routing software with 89,000 in earmark funds and 81,683,000 in end-of-the-year savings. That's, that's the motion. Do I get a second?
Second.
170,653.
I'll trust you. Is that what you got, Mark? You've got the calculator up?
I'm doing a different class.
89, I got it, hold on. 170,683?
Yes, 170,653.
683.
I take.
I have 683.
81,673.
So 16,933.
Yeah, 683.
170,683.
Yeah.
Right, 683, yep.
Okay, so I got a motion.
Second.
Good, second of my carry. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Conroy?
I make a motion that we transfer from school choice revolving fund, 158,772.
One second, one second. School choice revolving, 150, what?
158,772.
772, okay.
Of expenses into the FY '18 operating budget.
So the motion is to transfer from school choice revolving of 158,772 of expenses into the FY '18 operating budget.
FY '19.
No.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, we gotta move it this year.
All right, move, motion's been moved, and a motion's been made.
A second.
Denise seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, so, like, in the minutes, that 63,250 of this money is for the purposes of, of making, making available the funds for items listed with a priority three on the list.
So 63,250 for, for item-
For items listed with priority three excluding the lighting for auditorium.
Excluding the lighting in the auditorium. So the motion is the transfer from school choice revolving 158,772 of expenses into the FY '18 operating budget. In the discussion, we noted and put it into the record, 63,250 of, of that money will be allocated for items listed with number three on the capital expenses plan excluding the auditorium light.
We have to be careful, it's not gonna be allocated.
It's not allocated.
It's, it's for the-
Purposes of making funds available for-
Making funds available.
Making funds available, not allocated.
In FY '19.
Okay.
Is that clean enough?
No, that was, that was one of them, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, it's been moved, it's back into the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Is that the point?
Thank you, John.
Okay, so we did the capital expenses. We did the transportation.
Have to do the transfers.
We have to now look at the transfers.
We, we did not yet speak to the facility rental items. There are three items that are proposed-
Yeah, we just paid for them out of end-of-year.
Yeah, we paid for them.
We did?
Yep.
We just didn't use the facility rental, so we'll just carry that as balance.
Oh, okay. Okay.
That'll give us some wiggle room if something comes out.
So that's from end-of-year?
Yeah.
So all of, okay.
Everything was paid for, except the bus routing software and the lighting.
Okay, 'cause we do have quotes-
Yep, it's paid for, it's just not out of-
Okay.
So the last thing is fourth quarter transfers.
You do.
So, in your packet is a, fourth quarter transfers.
Are they?
First transfer is a, transfer from electricity to equipment for sports, 23,540. Did he break down, did we get a memo on what that 23,500?
I don't think we did.
23?
No. What it is, is, these are expenses that would have been charged to athletic revolving, and instead, we charged them, knowing that we had end-of-year money in other areas, we charged them to Fund 10. So we are allowing athletic revolving to carry over on your chart, updated chart of revolving at-
Where, where was this equipment for sports originally budgeted?
It would have come out of the revolving account.
Did we get a breakdown of the athletic revolving account? Or was that the last time?
Yes, so currently, there's, it's on the chart of all the revolving accounts?
No.
But not a one-pager. So currently, we have available on June 18, yesterday, 23,008 in revolving. If we do not, if we do not cover the expenses out of end-of-year money, then the balance will be zero in athletic revolving. So what we're proposing is to instead pay for those for the equipment to allow revolving to carry over.
I, I understand the concept. My, my point is, we should, going forward, we need to treat athletics revolving just like we do with choice and transportation, and we should have a one-pager. The last, the last one-pager we have is FY '17, and it was only as good as 11,2216. So we, we need to make sure we have an up-to-date one-pager.
I do know that April met extensively with, with Mr. Grant on that, if you'd like to-
I, I understand. I'm just saying-
You'd like the peek, the one-page at a glance, yeah?
We need, we need backup material. We need to have material in front of us so we can look and going back several years if we have to, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of money being spent in athletics, there's a lot of money coming in. We're still trying to get a handle on what is the total operating cost, which is another one of our strategic budgeting-
Goals.
-goals to do this, because it is a, a very complicated process. So anything we can do to make it a little less complicated, so we can make funding decisions, it would be helpful. So that was one of the transfers. I have no doubt that Mr. Grant spoke to April, but we do need backup material. The other transfer is the transportation, gas and oil maintenance transfer to the transport-
So we've already-
We already took care of it.
Cut it out.
That's off. And then programs with other schools to instructional materials in the amount of 26,540. Any, any questions about this?
I have a question. So we have this 26,540 in this programs with other schools, and we needed to cover instructional materials in that exact amount?
Yes.
So there's no, like, extra money in the programs with schools? All the money that we have programs with other schools is being exactly to the last penny spent in instructional materials?
So this is the excess-
We have to spend it.
This is the excess in that line item?
Okay.
That we, that, so if there was excess in program with schools, we had a shortfall of instructional materials. So after paying everything we had to specifically related to program with other schools, we still had 26,000 left in the budget. We're using that 26,000 to cover the shortfall we had in the instructional materials line of the budget.
So it exactly matches up?
There may have been other minor transfers that are below the threshold that we need to approve.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's not just so happens that it falls at its exact number.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
No, but also, we'll spend, they'll take whatever money they can in instructional materials, spend it out.
Well, but, right, but school's over right now, so we should have the exact number of what's been spent.
No, we, we didn't spend, they, we didn't spend the money in program with other schools, so that was a balance.
Yeah.
But that's not the whole balance from program with other schools.
Okay.
This is just what's left over.
Okay.
So say, I'm completely just throwing numbers out there.
Yeah.
Say our budget was 126,540. We spent 100,000, we have 26,000 left. We've got a shortfall in instructional materials, so we're just moving the savings from one line to cover the shortfall in the other.
But is there no other deficit in instructional materials? We've completely covered our instructional materials?
All other transfers that needed to get made would either come through, they're either smaller than what we need to approve, or we may have done in prior quarters.
Okay.
And so this just kind of cleans up all the transfers we need to do within the budget to zero it out.
Okay.
Because we can't have any, no one line can be showing negative, so we have to move pluses and minuses around throughout the budget at the end of the year.
Okay.
And additionally, on the capital list, we approved 40,000 of instructional materials as a capital item.
Okay, so there was more than the 26?
Yeah.
But that instructional materials of 40,000 is not budget shortfall, though.
That's for next year.
That's-
That's capital.
That's capital new.
Capital new, you're correct.
Our shortfall in instructional materials-
For this year.
This year was 26,540.
Yes, that's true.
So there's more in programs with other schools, we're just covering the 26?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And the same thing with the equipment for sports. There's more in electricity, we're just covering the 23?
Right.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? All right, we need, we need a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Conroy?
I make a motion that we approve the transfer from electricity to equipment for sports in the amount of 23,540, and the transfer from program with other schools to instructional materials in the amount of 26,540.
Second.
Oh, this sheet, Joe. It's this one.
Okay, no, I can't.
There you go, under your phone. First and third. Second one is moot.
So first and third?
Yep.
Yep.
Electric, sports, and programs with other schools, instructional.
You got it, Joe?
23,540 and 26,540.
That's correct. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
I did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Because we included it in the 240 that we-
We put it into the 240.
Right, so we didn't have to transfer it into the-
Because it became end-of-year savings.
Right.
And we spent it down.
Right.
Okay, all right. Defensive for the budget?
Thank you.
All right, what's next on the agenda?
Superintendent's report?
The next on the agenda is, I'm assuming that the superintendent-
I have it digitally right here, so you can find it right quick.
She's been clicking away all night. Mark's been muttering and you've been clicking. Caligun, take me away.
Okay.
All right, Superintendent's report?
June enrollment. June enrollment. We have one more student overall, as a preschool student who has enrolled. Our school choice numbers are at 97 students, and we have 19 students who are going out of district. So the school choice are not new students, they're just students we've uncovered as being school choice, or, and I think a family may have moved out of town, et cetera, that they're allowed to continue on and become choice students, so.
All right, that's the enrollment.
Mr. Chair? Two quick questions. Nancy, this 19 is not, or is it the total number of students that are choicing out?
No, that's in our budget book. Joe, do you have the budget book with you, don't you? In there, there's a chart. These are special education students-
These are district?
Who attending out of district placements. If I recall, the number of students choosing out of Milis was around 35 in, in that chart in the back. So it's, if, if my memory serves me, it's about a third of, of the number of students choosing in.
Is that across all grades? That 35?
Is it a what?
Across all-
Across all grades.
Yes.
School choice out column was 27.
27, okay. My memory did not serve me well, but it aired in the right direction.
And Nancy, just 'cause I forget sometimes, when we look at this, the choice, is that already included in the column to the left, or are they...
Yes. So our total enrollment currently is 1,320 students. 19 of those go to out-of-district placements for special needs.
And 97 of them are choice in.
97 of them are choosing in.
That's a subset of the 1301.
Correct, yep.
1320.
And there's 30, what is it, 27 going out?
Oh, yeah. And 27 choice from Milis to a different school district.
So 75% more are coming in than going.
Good to know.
Good to know.
Yeah.
In case you ever need that information.
Excellent numbers.
The chairman's report. We do have two tentative dates for our summer meetings. They are July 11th.
11th, yep.
We didn't get that.
It's a Wednesday?
We don't know yet.
No.
At some point, I'll be telling you, tell me.
Say seven for now. Seven o'clock on July 11th, Wednesday, July 11th. And the second July meeting will be Tuesday, July 31st. I'll just use seven o'clock for now. And if that changes, Jody, I'll get it to you ahead of time so you can post. We don't have any additional August meetings outside of the original, or the initial school meeting, which is, the first of the year would be August 28th. If necessary, we're prepared to have a meeting in August with a smaller number. There's a lot of vacations, so we would meet if we needed to do budget items or some sort of policy decision ahead of August 28th. I'll prepare some, some coherent thoughts on kind of the budget, the strategic budget process. I think we've identified a couple of the, the issues and the subject matters tonight, and we'll start that conversation in early July, so...
Mr. Chair, are we even here?
Last year, we met...
At the police station.
Met at the police station in an air-conditioned room.
It was a track.
Quite fancy.
Because they're not going to be televised, they're working sessions, they're open to the public, no one came. But it was, it's a question of availability, it's quite, honestly, it's a question of whether there's a custodian working, we're not going to bring someone in to open up the building.
Right, just for us.
So we'll, we'll, we'll work, maybe, maybe we could find a library room, but probably, we'll probably be at the police station.
Generally, over the summer, the buildings close at 6:00 PM and...
So we will, we will identify, we will ask the police if we can meet in their room on those two days. It's a nice room.
It is very nice.
And it's nice to get used. So that's it for my report for now. Next up is the subcommittee report, the Elementary School Building Committee.
Mr. Chair, so first of two, I guess, updates. So at the last meeting of the Elementary School Building Committee, they talked through current status with the building, showed some nice pictures that will be coming on Facebook within the next week or so of the interior, in addition to kind of some of the structural things that are happening over there. There was a beam signing event, I forget if we talked about it in this last meeting or not, but that has been hoisted, which is a very large milestone for the project. So all the Clyde Brown kids had their hard hats on and went and signed it, as did a lot of community members. So right now, the building is on schedule. They're tracking to, at this point in the project, a very low number of change orders with a very low dollar value associated with them. So that just speaks to the, the process that has been taking place, and also doing the CM-at-risk approach, which is, was part of the project from, from the outset. So kind of kudos to the contractor and for them to keep the costs in line where they are. One of the things that we did talk about at the last meeting was the impact of the school start date on the schedule, and the reason behind the request from the ESBC to gain as much time as we possibly could at the end of the summer of 2019 was because, as we knew from the outset, when the building opens, we will not have all of the parking in place. So there's, there's more than ample parking, an excellent traffic flow for the building. But because the existing Clyde Brown school needs to be remediated for asbestos and then demolished, and then we can go forward with that site planning work that allows for all of that parking area, the, they were trying to get as much time as they could out of that summer to get as much of that work done as possible. So it has nothing to do with the readiness of the building, it has nothing to do with contractors not meeting their dates. They have been superb to date, and we expect that they will continue to be. So the building will be available in June. And as soon as the children are out of the Clyde Brown school, what happens then is we start to empty it out as fast as we possibly can, because then they can start remediation, and then they can start demo. So I, I know that we had, so that's just a background for us and for the viewing audience as to the initial ask for extra summertime, what that would go, go towards, and the readiness of the building itself. So teachers will have access over the summer, they won't have to wait until August, they'll have plenty of time to get in, set their rooms up, so the, the building itself will be ready. This is planned site work that we've known about from the very inception of the project. So I know we've had, I don't know if it's appropriate or not to talk about school start time and kind of the survey that went out.
Yeah. It's cor, it's, I was going to mention it in new correspondence, because it was new correspondence, so yes, it's appropriate.
Okay. So now, understanding that the need for that time is not related to the building and is related to outside activities in areas that we know, quite frankly, are going to be challenging over the course, course of the first probably six months that the new school is open. We may not need to push as far, in my opinion, out to the ninth from a start date. So I think we have a little bit of flexibility there as far as when we might want to start, because it's not related to building readiness, it's related to how much on the outside. So if we were to potentially start right after Labor Day instead of before it, like we typically do, that would give the contractors an extra four days, let's say. So we're, we're taking away at most four days of work that they would be able to do. I don't think four days of work, again, in my opinion, is going to solve our parking problem in that period of time. So I think we have some flexibility there as far as the start of school, not having to go up to the ninth.
So just for background, because everyone in the committee, including the superintendent, is aware of, we received a letter from a citizen with concerns about the survey that went out, which talked about the potential consolidation of the two vacations, the February and April into one in March, and pushing the start date of school to September 9th. And there was some misconception that this was built, related strictly to the building. It's related to the project, which is still accurate, but it was a question of whether the building was going to be the ready. The building will clearly be ready, it'll be the site work. I will say that I think for some parents, and I know we've only, you know, some people have heard back from other people that it's okay, and we've only heard one so far negative. I think for some parents who are used to starting school prior to Labor Day in late August, seeing September 9th is, is a pretty big string. So I, I can understand that initial shock of, wait, we're not going back on the 28th, we're going, or the 29th, we're going back on September 9th, so those...
Which is, and Denise Spencer, I think it's, it's not even the date, because there are times, and I think we have talked about 9th, there are a lot of times when Labor Day is the 6th or the 7th. So I'll say for myself, I probably just glossed over the fact that Labor Day is the 2nd. So, you know, that, it's not just starting after, it's not starting af, just after Labor Day, when, originally, people are, are you starting after Labor Day? Okay, oh, well, I'm starting on the Tuesday or Wednesday after Labor Day. I think when we put it out there, and part of the reason why we put the survey out is to make sure that people really knew what the impact was, this is a week after Labor Day. So, again, concerns about childcare issues, you know, we always, you know, and totally people hear about it, camps don't run the first week, school is out, you know, this, next week, usually camps don't start, and camps don't run the week before Labor Day. So we're now, this, so it's already difficult, so we're now asking, if we went the 9th, we're asking people for another week of...
It's almost two weeks.
Two weeks.
Yes. It's almost two weeks, so, and I understand that...
Well, even if you, even if you said starting after Labor Day, because it's fairly common still for people to start after Labor Day.
The last several have been in August.
Oh, our, for us, yes.
Yes, 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 yes.
But, but there are many districts in the state.
No, we, in this district, we've started several years, many, many years ago. I think there was a couple, the, the Tuesday after Labor Day, but it was like September 3rd.
Right, right.
But the last few have definitely been in August.
In August, correct.
Bumping that extra week.
Yeah, we were literally talking, so I can understand where someone, because I, I went back to my notes, and we did say September 9th in here, but it just didn't really impact until a survey went out and a parent reacted to it. And listen, I don't want to do anything to impact the project, but in the grand scheme of things, is a three-day shift or a four-day, is that really going to matter that much to them? I'm sure they would love as much time as they can with no one around, but the, the impact to construction, which they're used to working probably in tight spots versus basically a brand-new thing, a concept, and adding almost two weeks onto a summer, I, we have to balance what's right for everyone included, which, someone's not going to be happy at the end, it's just a matter of maybe minimizing the unhappiness. Do you have anything to, you, you heard back from people?
Not regarding the, the start date of school, it was more get, about the, the subject of the survey, which was the consolidation of the, of the two vacations. You know, I, I did hear back from a few parents, and it was all in favor, and they liked the idea of the consolidation. I, I would be interested to see what the survey, survey results are, and, you know, a week or two when people are given, so even if we shift, so if we shift the, if we can shift the start date back to the 3rd...
3rd or 4th, Tuesdays, the 3rd, Wednesdays, the 4th.
Are we still putting forth the idea of consolidating the breaks? Knowing that we have an extended Christmas break?
I think it's, I think it's already out there.
I mean, it's already out there.
Right.
Right. So I think that we should take a look at the feedback and then make a decision based off of the feedback that we get from the community.
Because we could do both.
We could do both, yes. And a lot of districts we talked about are moving towards the one break. So it's something we could, I know we just talked about the one year, but I think it's something that's worth looking into, and if this is an avenue to, to start that, we should look into it.
Sure. But that, we can almost run two, the two issues separate, right? The ones, the start date versus the, let's see what...
Right, because I think the start date was a good discussion that came out of the survey. That's not what the intent was of the survey was, but it was a very good mechanism to get that information out there and to gather feedback from the community. So I think that this is, you know, this was a good, that now we can react and really take a look at that. But I also think that we should take a look at the results for the breaks and make a decision based off of, you know, the feedback that we get from the community.
That's right.
And the last thing I would add is, absolutely the intent of why we asked the administration to do the survey was to, at a very early date, get all of this information out there so that people could be aware, start planning, if they had concerns, raise them. We haven't even started...
I mean, it's the last day of school today.
Right.
We're ahead of it.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
Exactly. Thank you for sending it out.
So I do have preliminary information, I don't want to announce it, because I don't want to skew, you know, motivate people to vote the other direction or anything, but the...
Be prepared, here we are.
All, all eight, 10 people watching at home. The, I do think, you know, the teachers have opinions, and I've heard back from several teachers who have concerns, especially if they have, you know, children who attend other school districts. So I think as part of, part of it, I should try to ascertain in some way how many other public school districts do this. I know it's common in private schools, but the, not as common in public schools currently. But we, we do have a year and two months, and what I suggest is that I confer with the Teachers Association again, and maybe bring back an alternative to see September 3rd, 4th start date, and we can talk about it at ESBC with the...
But we're not negotiating with the teacher union over the start date.
It is part of the contract that we do, it is part of the contract that, it is in consultation with, I forget the exact language, but we always confer and consult and collaborate on setting, which we had, and the Teachers Association had taken a look at the calendar, they understood the need that was put forth to us about having that extra week, so we came up with what we thought was a good solution of September 9th with a lot of front-loaded training for teachers, so, but we'll bring it back to the committee with a different start date. And my question, I guess, is how long do you think is sufficient? Another, maybe a week for the survey to stay open?
I'd be interested, without knowing the result, if you have, do you know how many respondents?
345 respondents so far.
That's not bad for a few days.
Yeah, yeah.
Yesterday.
It's a day.
I think there's high interest.
Yeah.
I, the only other thing is, and I know some individuals have shared it on social media, which has helped, but we also know that not everyone necessarily pays attention to what is served, especially on the day before the last day of school.
Yeah.
So maybe...
Send that out again.
...presenting it and, and maybe having...
Maybe next Monday.
I know some of the page, some of the, at least the middle school, and they probably have, have the school page, school Facebook pages, or Twitter, or whatever. Putting it out there, or at least a, a link to it, so that we're getting as many people to notice it. 345 is great.
That's a response.
I think the Facebook idea is a great one, yeah, people would, I think, but you've got a lot more additional hands off of that.
We can do that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we don't have any other subcommittee reports, do we have any correspondence?
I do have in your packets, the, what Jen Starr had announced is we're very excited to receive from Merit, two grants, one for the Merit Innovation Lab, which is funding in the amount of $18,720 to fund a proposal that we, as an administrative team with teacher input, put together for virtual reality kits, one in each building. There will be an innovation lab here in the library, and there will also, so there will be stations here, but also the ability for the parts to be taken to rooms and used in classrooms as well. And of course, we'll provide good training for teachers to help them understand all the possibilities of the virtual reality goggles, for lack of a better term. And as Jen said, she'd love to bring those in and demo them a little bit for the committee, or maybe have students demo them for the committee. The other proposal is the High School Engineering Program. To kickstart that program, we received $14,200. And the engineering program is for training and the materials to train one of our high school teachers who happens, math teacher who happens to have been a former engineer to develop the curriculum for the engineering course. So we're very appreciative of Merit. It's a very, both are very exciting and will benefit students across the district.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. All right, any school committee announcements?
Oh, the chair.
Yes, Ms. Gibbons.
This will air afterwards, but I'm going to say it anyway. Just a reminder about the Family Fun Fair, that's this Saturday from 5:00 to 10:00, being put on by combined efforts of Coach Craby and the Milis Varsity Football Team, but a really great event for the community. It's going to be music and sports and activities and raffles and all of that, so I hope...
I hope everyone goes Saturday night or went Saturday night from 5:00 to 10:00 at the High School Field.
Any other announcements? Okay. We're going to go to executive session for contract negotiations for Ms. Marks, Ms.